This meeting now comes to order. Please stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the pride of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes, Your Honor, before I call the roll, I would like to announce that council members Long, Shepherd, and Steinke have asked to be excused, and I will mark them so. Mayor Gunter?
Here.
Council Members Carr?
Here.
Costin?
Here.
Hayden?
Here.
Welsh?
Here.
Five present, three excused.
Okay, thank you. Move on to item four, citizens' input time. Citizens' input time is a maximum of 60 minutes, except for the input of citizens on matters concerning city government, three minutes per individual. Please remember to state your name for the record. We're going to utilize the podium to my left, your right. So if you'd like to participate, please come forward.
Good evening. Glenn Snyder, 219 Southeast 9th Terrace. We have a continuing flooding issue in our neighborhood, and the city staff recently told us that they had a study that was performed that addressed specific issues. We've recently found out that this study doesn't exist. It's a stall tactic. We've been stalled for 19 and a half years, and we need to get to the bottom of it.
Thank you.
Jay Higgins, Northwest Cape. And before I go any further, I want to say thank you for the two that did call, returned my call when I called last week. And the second thing I want to say, I'm not anti-police. I am pro-police. My sister was a law enforcement officer for 32 years. She's taken bullets for her city and has been damaged in concussions, dislocated shoulders, et cetera. So I'm not anti-police, but what I'm going to say is going to sound maybe like it. But what I am against is I'm against opening up contracts that are in force. We have a contract with the police for a certain amount of money, and I believe that we should live by that agreement. And I would assume that that agreement has a cost of living adjustment associated with it. And if it does, I think the negotiations should be just right there disqualified. But we all have to agree that the poor economy has hurt everybody. Seniors are getting jobs to make ends meet. Everyone's paying higher prices at the grocery store, getting gasoline, electricity. And I agree that we all need a break. However, we're all suffering these high prices, but taking more out of our money to give the police a raise is not right. There is agreement in place. The Cape Coral Police, I believe, they reported at the 62, 62nd percentile of wages. That's pretty good. It's in the upper half. That's not too bad. I don't see anything wrong with that. There's nothing wrong with being in the upper half of wages of the other entities that you're comparing wages with. Cape even has an ad out there that says a first year policeman can make over $63,000 in Cape, plus a $10,000 sign-on bonus. And if they're from out of state, then get another $5,000. That's pretty good. Not too shabby. What else they get? Health insurance, dental, vision, life insurance, get a nice pension plan, tuition reimbursement, paid holidays, a take-home vehicle, as we found out, it's worth about $6,000 a year, all their equipment and uniform, plus they get other perks, discounts at the racquetball place or what have you. So when you give this nice package, and they want even more than that, go tell that to the waiter or the waitress tonight when you go out to dinner. How about the cashier, or the tradesman, or the tattoo artist, or the childcare worker that's trying to make ends meet? You tell them that. I'd say they have it pretty good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chris Doyle, Southeast 9th Terrace. This is, I think, my third time in, well, I was here three weeks ago. Apparently, I wasn't loud enough and clear enough. Mr. Hayden, I know you've talked to A.J. Boyd about the drainage itself over there. Mr. Boyd is going to get involved himself now because this is out of control. And I said it when the podium was over there, Gloria Tate was sitting there, and I called out every single one of you, and I says, if any one of you lived in my neighborhood, this wouldn't happen. For 19 years, what corruption has taken place is unprecedented. It's unbelievable, and you guys know it. And I know Ms. Jessica got an email from him.
Sir, you got to address this as a collective body now.
I'm sorry, council, but she specifically sent an email from Mr. Snyder, and she was the only one to respond, and I would like her to elaborate on that email if she needs clarification on that. He can clarify that. But this has got to end. We need the sheet flow from this community of Celebration Cape. We need to know, is it Little Israel? Is there an iron dome over it? Nobody can touch it, and they're flooding us out for all these years. This is unacceptable. My house and his house and half the neighborhood is destroyed. It rains for five minutes, we're underwater. I mean, how does it get this far? For 19 years, guys? Come on! I can't wait to get out of here. But how am I going to sell my house? I got to report it. I can't sell my house to somebody who knows flooding. I got no yard left, neither does he. And the other people gave up, but I have 100 signatures here from them, but that goes unnoticed as well. I want to leave Cape Coral. I can't get out of here fast enough. This got to end now, and that sheet flow is very, very important. And for some reason, it's not available. Why isn't it available? That's something you need to talk to your staff about. I don't know. I've worked in with Mr. Williams quite well. Nice guy. I'm glad you got some new, fresh people in here. Nice, nice guy. Other than I forgot to remind him to wear his boots to Allen's house because his feet got pretty wet. Ironically, three Fridays ago, he got in the middle of it. He saw it for himself. So he's well aware of what's going on over there, that you guys aren't doing anything or not being told about, not accusing you. I don't think you guys really understand the significance of what is happening. It's that bad. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak? Please come forward.
Hi, my name is Grace Jill Birdy. I lived here in the Cape for about 30 years, and there are a couple of things that I'm upset about, and then also, I have a question. When I first moved down here, I was told that the Chiquita lock had to stay there because it was an issue with environment, the environment. So I was shocked that that went through. I want to see what's going to happen there. Also, shocked about J.C. Park. I didn't expect it to go as far as it did. I was hoping it was just going to be minor adjustments. It is a beautiful park, and I do go there to walk, even though I live in the Southwest. I want to encourage you not to change the zoning for Redfish Point. I know the Zimmel Trust owns part of that property, and they have been paying very little tax because of the way that it's zoned for all these years. And now, they want to change the zoning so that they can make this, you know, huge hotel and houses and a marina and retail space, and that area there needs to have mangroves and what it's there because the flooding will get worse if it's not there. I encourage you not to do that. And if you decide to do it, for whatever reason, they should pay back taxes because they got away with paying almost nothing. Okay, my last thing is a question. I have received a letter from FEMA and a letter from the City of Cape Coral regarding Hurricane Ian. Now, I think it's a form letter, but I'm really not sure because it does have my husband's name on it from FEMA. I don't know what I'm supposed to be doing with this. We had, the only thing that we had fixed so far is the roof, which was mostly paid for, and the permit was taken out by the roofing people, Kelly Roofing. So I don't know what I'm supposed to do at this point. I still have things that need to be replaced. I haven't gotten it done yet because it's hard to find people to do the work. So if I could have somebody help me with that, I'd appreciate it, and that's it. Thank you so much for everything that you do do, whether or not I agree with you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else wishing to speak on citizens' input? Seeing none, citizens' input's now closed. I'll open up for discussion for council. Real quickly, our last speaker, maybe Matt can get with her to try to help her out with the FEMA packet questions that she may have. And as far as Mr. Snyder and Mr. Doyle, I guess, Mr. Williams, I guess you're kind of familiar with what's going on there. And I'll let, you know, staff handle it, but I think maybe I'm not familiar with it. So maybe, Mr. City Manager, if you want to elaborate a little bit, or have staff get back with me at a later time, just to kind of get me up to speed on that issue.
Yeah, I think what we'll do is Public Works will put together like a case analysis of the situation. What they're, my understanding is that there were projects that were done to alleviate flooding. It did not address the entirety of the situation. I'm understanding that south of Celebration was done as part of the Nicholas Parkway improvements to get the draining from the south side. I believe the east side and the north side have, still have some additional work to be done. I don't want to try and sugarcoat it for the resident. The Public Works Director did go out there a couple of weeks back, sent me a text with water in the entire neighborhood, you know, basically up to his knees. So it is a serious situation that our new director and stormwater staff is taking seriously, and they're going to be putting together a permanent solution. I believe they have some studies, some drainage basin studies they need to put together to see how big of an area it's draining, how much impervious surface is there, what the conveyances are, and then work on a solution for them so that it is fixed. That's not going to be done by the end of this rainy season, but hopefully designed and permitted and in construction to help them before the next one.
Okay, sounds great. Look forward to getting that information, and it sounds like staff will be working with you.
And Matt and I, and Public Works Director and Mr. Boyd, Hayden and Alan, A.J. Boyd, we're all going to meet.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
Call me tomorrow.
Any other council discussion?
Thanks, Matt.
Okay. Seeing none, we'll move on to item five is public hearings. The first of which, we have ordinance 59-24. Madam City Clerk, please read title, set the second and final public hearing date.
Ordinance 59-24, an ordinance of the mayor and city council of the City of Cape Coral, Florida, to establish and levy ad valorem taxes within the corporate limits of the City of Cape Coral, Florida, for the tax year 2024, providing for the levy of ad valorem taxes in the amount of 5.2188 mils, based on the assessed value on non-exempt real and personal property located within the city limits of the City of Cape Coral, providing for the levy of ad valorem taxes in the amount of 0.1791 mils, based on the assessed value of the appropriate real and personal property located within the city limits of the City of Cape Coral, for funds for annual debt service for the City of Cape Coral, Florida General Obligation Bond, Bank of America Series 2019, and the City of Cape Coral, Florida General Obligation Bonds Series 2021, providing for the manner of assessment and collection, providing severability, repealing all ordinances in conflict with this ordinance, providing an effective date. The second and final public hearing will be September 26, 2024.
Thank you, Mr. Mason.
Sir, Mr. Mayor, Council Members, Mark Mason, interim Assistant City Manager. Before I begin, I just want to take a couple of minutes and recognize Nicole Reitler is our budget administrator and our staff for the work that they've done in putting this budget together, the input by the departments, department heads and their staff, and their efforts in putting together a fair and equitable budget for the city. We're going to do one presentation for both ordinances tonight, but the requirement is that you have to approve one ordinance, the millage rate ordinance, before you approve the budget ordinance. And so, when we get to the budget ordinance, we're not going to make a second presentation. We've already have made it. So ad valorem taxes, as a reminder, it provides for the general operations of the city. The calculation is the millage rate times taxable value equals your ad valorem taxes, and it's expressed as the terms of the rate of per $1,000 in value. So we have two rates that we're talking about tonight. We have a not-to-exceed rate of 5.2188 mils. This was the half-back rate, or in our case, it's the not-to-exceed rate that was published in the trim notices that was compared back against last year's millage rate as well as the rollback rate. This not-to-exceed rate is 2.55% above the rollback rate of 5.0888 mils. 5.2188 rate, again, was included on our trim notices, and so we have three options for adoption. We can, clearly, we can adopt at the not-to-exceed rate. In this case, we set a tentative rate. It's not really an adoption. We just set a tentative rate of 5.2188 mils, and then we, or you can set a tentative rate of the rollback rate, or anything in between, or anything less during the course of the approval of that ordinance. The city manager's tentative proposed tentative budget based upon the millage rate of 5.2188 mils for the general fund, it's $258,485,000. For all funds, it's $1,588,158,403,000. For the rollback rate, the general fund would be $254,793,000, and the all funds would be $1,554,000,000. We also have a proposed millage rate for the Parks General Obligation Bonds at .1791 mils. This millage rate is designed to collect the taxes to make the annual debt service payment on those outstanding bonds. So again, by law, we're required to adopt a tentative millage rate before adopting a tentative budget. The resulting budgetary adjustments, if any, will be made during the public hearing for ordinance 60-24. So the fiscal year 2025 budget summary in total, we give you by fund as well as the in total funds. We give you both the not-to-exceed rate as well as the rollback rate. We're also showing you what the tentative changes would be if we had the not-to-exceed rate and the rollback rate. As a reminder, the city manager proposed a budget at 5.3126 mils, so any changes from the proposed budget from what's been published out there is reflective in this particular chart. Under the not-to-exceed rate, the only difference between the not-to-exceed rate and the rollback rate is under where it states police. We have something in there for additional funding, 10% raise for police officers, sergeants and lieutenants. That's the only difference between these two proposals. In addition, since we had our last budget workshop with the city council in August, we've also received some additional information that, you know, that has changed the budget a little bit, and so it has caused us to have to make a few, a couple of changes. Some of that information is, you know, we've already talked about the adjustments to ad valorem and the use of fund balance. We've also received a TDC grant that was not on the radar when we prepared the budget. We have a slight reduction in the lot mowing assessment. This doesn't change the actual assessment itself. It's just changing the budget of $400,000. We've also received notice that we have CDBG grants, CDBG DR grants and a grant match, $46 million coming through, so we're budgeting for those now, as well as the old golf course adjustment and reallocation changes that were included in the additional use of fund balance. We also have the, we also had some changes to revenues. We've been noticed after the, again, after we had our last budget workshop, we were informed that both 5 cent and 6 cent gas tax will be coming in at $1.6 million less than what we had anticipated or estimated when we developed the budget. And so, between the two, between the two, at the rollback rate or at the not-to-exceed rate, again, the only difference and the only change that is between these two is what I stated earlier with regard to the 10% adjustment for police officers, sergeants and lieutenants. Fiscal year budget highlights, we have a number of them. You know, we're doing the North Cape Government Complex. We have Station 5 Design for the rebuild. We also have sidewalk expansions, additional funding for Operation Sparkle, funding for J.C. Park, acquisition of the development of the old golf course. We also are looking at median curving and median improvements. For infrastructure, we have a number of items in the infrastructure. We're in the third year of the city fiber wireless conduit connecting all facility, city facilities with hardened communications. We also have the North RO Treatment Plant well field expansion, as well as the North Water Reclamation Facility, A.D.M.G.D. expansion. Environmental sustainability, we have CDBG funds for wear replacement and rehabilitation, as well as surface water management quality improvements and any flood prevention improvements. So as a reminder, we have one more public hearing associated with both the millage rates as well as the budget, and it's on Thursday, September 26, at 5:05 p.m. And I'm here for any questions.
Thank you. I'll now open up the first public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on ordinance 59-24, please come forward.
I'm Jay Higgins again, Northwest Cape. I just want to voice my approval for the rollback rate, and I think that us taxpayers need a good break. The rollback rate, you guys teased us with the rollback rate for six or seven weeks until the last-minute Hail Mary from the police came that they want to get more money. And, you know, there's money in the budget. Go cut it from there. Don't take it from us. Go back to the rollback rate. You teased us long enough. Let's go back to the rollback rate, like you said. We continue to pay these high taxes, roll them back, and there's money in the budget. Go, you tasked these people to go to the rollback rate, and they found all the money. And then now you want to come back and make us pay more money so we can pay for the police. You know, I'm not against, I think everybody should make as much money as they can. I'm in favor of that. But they have a deal. The deal's on the table. It's been agreed upon. There's probably a cost of living adjustment in it. Let's just go with that. Go to the rollback rate, keep things as they are, and everything will be fine. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on ordinance 59-24? Seeing none, public hearings now closed. My understanding that we need to set the tentative operating millage rate, so at this time, I will open up for any council discussion, or I will entertain a motion regarding the tentative operating millage rate.
I'll make a motion to set the tentative operating millage rate at 5.2188 mils, which is 2.55% above the rollback rate of 5.0888, and the tentative millage rate for the Parks General Obligation Bond at .1791 mils.
Second. Is there any council discussion? Council Member Carr.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to address Mr. Higgins' comments and make sure he understands they didn't fall on deaf ears, I'm sure, by any of us. I think it just comes down to, you know, agree to disagree scenario, at least for me. And I fully respect his opinion. I don't see it as a Hail Mary. They were actually, this has been talked about for months, and the difference now that came to light during the timeline of this budget process was the significant disparity within a study that we just received in that timeline. So I think that's what the sway was for me. I agree, contracts are meant to be upheld. In this instance, there's still discussion about how that will transpire, but may not require an opening of the contract to accomplish what we're trying to do. It is a good salary. I think our police officers and firefighters and all public safety are paid pretty well in our city. As a prior law enforcement officer myself, I appreciated the pay that I received and the benefits I receive to this day. However, there's really, you can't put a price on the job that they do, in my opinion. I did it willingly for 25 years, and I know that they're doing it willingly today. And I know you respect that, based on the conversation that you and I had. I just wanted to voice my opinion on it. I think it's warranted. The disparity between the pay of the comparable departments that we do utilize is significant, from 16% to 36%, depending on the position in the organization. You know, it's important to show the value that we see. I think the citizens of our city also agree, public safety is number one. And I think we enjoy a very, very safe city that we all live in, and I want to continue with that. And I think this helps keep us there. So I will be in support of the proposed not-to-exceed rate. It was just, the motion was made, but I wanted to make those comments for you. Thank you.
Any other council discussion? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Carr?
Aye.
Costin?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Five ayes, motion carried.
Okay, we will move on to ordinance 60-24. Madam City Clerk, please read title, set the second and final public hearing date.
Ordinance 60-24, an ordinance of the mayor and city council of the City of Cape Coral, Florida, adopting the City of Cape Coral operating budget, revenues and expenditures and capital budget for the fiscal year 2025 for the City of Cape Coral, Florida, repealing all ordinances in conflict with this ordinance, providing for severability and an effective date. The second and final hearing will be September 26, 2024.
Thank you, Mr. Mason. I know you didn't have anything to add. I just wanted to confirm that before I open up public hearing.
Yes, sir, nothing else to add.
Thank you. I'll now open up the first public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on ordinance 60-24, please come forward. Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. My understanding that we need to set the tentative operating and capital budget. I will open up for any council discussion or a motion regarding the tentative operating and capital budget, which is outlined in the ordinance 60-24.
Motion to set the tentative operating capital budget of $1,584,403,269.
Second. Any council discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Carr?
Aye.
Costin?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Five ayes, motion carried.
Thank you. Item six, time, place, future meetings. We have a special meeting in the Cape Coral City Council scheduled for Wednesday, September 18, 2024, beginning at 3:00 p.m. in Conference Room 220A. We also have a We also have a regular meeting in the Cape Coral City Council scheduled for Wednesday, September 18th, 2024, beginning at 4:30 PM here in council chambers. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting adjourned.